All right, BEAT seven fifteen eighteen sixteen, like open the channel plan for me for September twenty 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 three. First up, we have a public hearing for stone reduced winners lot and common driveway special permit on Gia Road. They have requested to be continued till November fifteenth twenty twenty three. We have a motion to continue that public hearing until November fifteenth.
Okay.
All those in favor?
I, I.
I can hear us. All right. Next up, we have a CMR PC information session. Our low impact development and Julia Law from CMR PC is joined us by a zoom. Julia, how you doing?
Good. How was everyone? Thanks for having me via zoom. How's, how's the?
We're good. We're good. So you can go right ahead and do your thing.
Okay, great. I'm gonna try to share my. Okay, it looks like I'm able to. Okay, great. And can you see my?
Yep, you see it?
Yeah, we have it.
Version huh swap. How about that? Okay, that's better. Um, okay, so, so sorry I'm late. I'll try to keep this brief so you can get back to the reg. Scheduled programming, but my name is Julia Moore. I'm with Central Mass Regional Planning Committee. Um, we do plans for um, the forty towns uh. Be or in central mass. Um, and I'm doing, I do an energy and environment. Um, for CMR PC. Today, um, I'm going to talk about low impact development. Or yes, I'll talk about it tonight. Um, and so this is an assessment of total rules and regulations um, through a mass Audubon's best framework. So a couple of months ago, Angela Panasione is the former conservation director. I believe she left. Um. And I've been doing low impact development reviews of bylaws and developmental right, a couple of towns. And so she kind of worked with me and we got funding for me to do this. You're RPC funding, so it wasn't um, out of the town's pocket. So we use D. Which is a really good source funding that CMR PC has every year. Um, and again, this is I looked at the zoning by law subdivision rules and regs. Um, what you have for plan review, storm water by law and storm water rules and regulations. Um, and and the mass Audubon best practices framework. Um, so I'm going to explain what all that means. Okay, so again, just today, I'm going to try to keep it. But I'm talking about what is low impact development and then bring it to Charlton and found and summary of recommendations under this framework and next steps. So low impact development is a design approach to development or redevelopment. Works with nature to manage storm water as close to the source as possible. So though some of the hallmarks of LID is preserving natural landscape minimizing impervious. Using green infrastructure. Um, and then just the general idea water as a resource and not as waste. What's the problem? I think everybody here knows that development with a lot of impervious surface and not smart and causes all these horrible pictures. Flooding, algal blooms, polluted water and infrastructure, stuff that you don't want in town. Um, so this low impact development with smart design and green infrastructure. Um, this increase filtration, it reduces runoff and increases groundwater. It improves water to tea and keeps infrastructure intact. Um, I love these pictures of kind of development examples. We have a green roof. We have cluster development. So it's avoiding clearing of of open space and natural land. And we have some green infrastructure kind of rain garden of using the earth's natural features to absorb rain and reduce the risk of flooding. Um, so here of a little bit of a not LID versus LID. We have the not down the top and then what it could look like if you have some more of the best practices is for development in the bylaws and in the developmental regulations. And again, it's that conservative space that is already providing the free ecosystem services and integrating green times into the development. Um. Zero. So this was an assessment, uh, kind of a study of the town developmental regulations. If there were opportunities, I didn't know if Charlton had amazing low impact development bylaws already. This was kind of using this great um, Excel spreadsheet that mass Audubon has as um, with all of the different um, frameworks and best practices and combing through um, documents that I mentioned. Um, and kind of giving them a grade on each of the best practices. And so again, so step zero, this is kind of outlining where the town has opportunity. Oh, and where their opportunity to make changes or additions. And I just said. And then following the assessment, I'll talk about this at the end. Uh, there's an opportunity to work with CMR to apply for funding. I have some resources for that to actually write up some of the development language that I talk about. So we're, we're at step zero here. Briefly talking about the tool that I used. Again, this big Excel have on the left side, all the different factors. There's like thirty two factors that follow these five goals. Um, street location, road width, um. Deals, revegetation, all these things. And then I went through each of these documents and tried talks about that. And then take um, a quote from it or take that section and then give it a grade based on conventional better invest. What are examples of the best practices? Um, the first is on just protecting natural resources at open space. It's managing soil um, for with native species, limiting clearing and lawn size. Again, these are just kind of examples. Um, goal two was a lot of reduce a lot size frontage setback. Actually, that impervious surface cover and increasing cluster development and shared driveway. That kind of looks like this picture, which is one of my favorite pictures of, you know, not clearing cluster around roads and keeping open space and keeping um, that natural vegetation rather than reason whatnot. Um. Goal three was smart designs that perviousness that's designing in a, in a smart way with narrower roads. Herbs and unless dead ends that again, that kind of waste of impervious surface. Use that that could look like with cluster development. Um, and the fourth goal is in green infrastructure measures. That could be a ton of different really innovative cool thing. I retention swales, um, green roofs, rain gardens and permeable. Um. Here's an example of, of that rain garden. And the fifth one parking because parking lots are a big kind of problem when you talk about um, so how can you incorporate bio retention landscaping, shared parking? Maximum parking spaces um, when you have to have parking in town. Okay. Kind of scary, but trust me, it's less scary than the really long Excel sheet that um, I tried to. Um. So I kind of just tried to go through and, and take little pieces from the Excel document that has every factor outlined for each of these documents. Um, so a summary of um, the zoning by law, I kind of took away that certain um, and certain options in uh, the zoning by law like um, Drake senior living by law, reduce frontage lots, flexible development option. Already we have LID best practice language in there. Um, that's minimizing clearing, flexible dimension. It's density, minimizing street width and things like that. Um, but again, these are districts in town and by special permit in many cases. So um, the town spanning similar language to um, do these things and limit impervious surface additional districts beyond what's already in there um, to meet that best practice. The subdivision, kind of a similar trend of there's a start there. There is air roads based on the character of the subdivision. But um, one like really strong practice for subdivision is to have open space residential development option by um, and I think that that is a, that's potential thing to add for this for the town to um, that is a type of development that, you know, really emphasizes low impact development. As far as it's cluster development, it's limiting clearing and um, men that I've been talking about. Uh, moving right along, um, there isn't a standalone site plan review that I had. Um, I was using, I see like this from all the other documents, but um, I was using part of the zoning. And it, you know, it has the general review and approval criteria. Um, however, it does include the stringent guidelines consistent with low impact development best practices that I have in that Excel. So language can be added to the site plan review as well to kind of make sure it's there from the jump. Um. Stormwater by law, the erosion and sediment control plan go was beyond NPDS requirements. Um. But there's an opportunity to more specific low impact development best practices. I'm repeating myself of is required in um, of site disturbance, reduction of construction waste, require control moved until proof of soil stabilization, things like that. I won't go on. Um, the stormwater management rules and regulations document that I had um. State that um, it wants or it so low impact development strategies must be used as much as feasible, which is great. It's an excellent start. And I just was saying or adding in based on that mass Audubon criteria. Want to take it to specific standard and 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 there's an incorporate unmentioned green infrastructure measures to go along with that kind of general as much as feasible. Okay. Moving right along. Summary of the recommendations in total. So again, this kind of summary of the justices were already present as options in many districts. Um, but step at the town may consider expanding that language to additional spots in town. Great. More options by right and setting specific requirements as presented by the mass Audubon guideline. Again, considering enacting that standalone open space for judgment option um, as a preferred um, option zoning by law. Kind of creating that site plan review check, review checklist with requirements that meet low impact practices. Um. Again, considering adding green infrastructure specific language such as green roofs, rain gardens, rainwater harvesting. Ament. And then also consider adopting language to provide credits or incentive for the use of these techniques. So um. This slide is really cool because it's kind of some case study and examples of this happens. You know, this doesn't exist in a vacuum. It's not something I'm just talking to Charlton about. We have an example of a shared driveway and it highlights the benefit uh, less impervious surface, but still plenty of parking and the addition of, you know, privacy. There are trees there, a rain garden in Devon's mass gathers a curbless road to infiltrate stormwater back into the ground while also beautifying the and then we have a parking lot. And there again, is at Rhode Island. Um. Right, it has. Um, let's see, or on the left, sorry, it has that like red pavement with puddles formed and it's like flooding everywhere. And then on the right, you have um, old pavement that the, the rainwater has soaked through. Okay, I've been talking and talking, but um, next steps, again, this kind of that big Excel document, I, I'm running up a narrative report to go with it. Uh, kind of highlights each of the places in those regulations that could benefit from more advanced development provisions and changes. Um, so I would say the next steps would be view that kind of major document and I am happy to work with you to kind of pick which ones Carlton would want to go for. And then the next step would be applying for a grant or two here that um, have funded this many times in the past for CMR PC or and to go ahead and write some of that draft language um, to hopefully be added into relations. Thank you. I'm happy to open it up for questions.
Go ahead, go ahead, go on. So Julia, in your report, can you provide some sample verbiage of some of the regulations that you would suggest? For uh, low impact development, how we can incorporate those into some of our bylaws? Some sample verbiage, maybe take it from other.
Oh. Through the actual the actual bylaw language itself, like sample language?
Yep.
That's a great question.
Yeah, maybe examples of that, that other towns have that, that you uh, see as good practices.
Yes, absolutely. Mass Audubon um, has um, a ton of sample online, of samples online that I'm happy to provide if we with applying for a grant or however you want to do kind of drafting that language. Yes, there are plenty of good examples and model bylaws online.
Right, Neil. So at this point, I'm sorry.
Go, go, Randy.
So at this point. What are you looking for? The board wants to move forward and actually apply for a grant to work with CMR PC to amend our language to include uh, LID uh, in our development, changing of the bylaws, subdivision regs. Right? So right now, we're, you're looking for our support to or apply for a grant to use your services and whatever else to make
Yes.
use some recommended by law amendments.
That's correct. Um, the next step would be, you know, I'm going to send that final report. Would be moving forward with a grant to draft language to actually upgrade some of these measures.
So you said twenty four, what was the date? Did it happen that, I mean? A date in two thousand twenty four when it has to be submitted by?
Um, the grant rounds that I have in mind for opportunity is part of um, EEA planning assistance grants. Uh. BP action grants, and those are both in early spring. So we have the rest of the year and then the beginning of the spring to, to look into applying to those.
Okay, so the, so I, I guess we'll look forward to getting that report from you. We, we can discuss it at a future board meeting.
Right, yeah, great. Thanks. Yeah, there's no like right now, it's just kind of complete, I've completed the assessment and it again is blueprint for um, when we go ahead with a grant and eventually try to draft some language. But I just wanted to come and let everyone know that that report is on its way and that to be talking about in it. Um, and then we can keep in touch and um, I'll make sure to then all that about these grant opportunities early when um, the kind of round is starting for twenty four.
Great, thank you very much, Julia.
Thank you, Julia.
I'm very interested to pay for it. But I will submit it to all the board members and then we'll schedule for another meeting once there, then opportunity to review it.
Absolutely. Sounds great.
All right. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you all for the meeting. Great night.
Thank you. Bye bye. All right. Next up, we have a continued public hearing for Curtis Hill Estates, Curtis Hill Flexible Development Department. Playing off of Curse of Road, the African has requested to be continued to October eighteenth. We have a uh motion to approve this, or to extend this or to be continued to ten eighteen.
Go on. Second.
All those in favor?
I, I.
I. All right. Next up, we have a continued public hearing for Edward Service Site from an application at sixteen St. River Road. The African has requested to be continued to ten eighteen. Give a motion to continue this application to ten eighteen, this public hearing.
The move.
Like, all those in favor?
I, I.
All right. Next up, we have an informal discussion with President Jeffrey Richardson to discuss the possible accessory dwelling units in Charl- and in Charlton. And in our pack, we have an email from Jeff. How's it going?
I'm doing well. Um. You ID?
We can sit right here. Yeah, come right over. Just sit down right there and just
All right.
So you're in front of all of us to just see and
Sure.
whatever information you want to provide.
All right.
What you're looking to do.
But thanks for having me. It's uh, it's been a pleasure to be here. Um. I want to uh, I, I assume all of you know what an ADU is, right?
Yes.
Accessory dwelling unit.
Correct.
Okay. And, and the nature of that is of course uh, another place to reside that's usually smaller than the initial, you know, uh, home. And I think uh, you know, with the way everything's going with real estate or, or the lack thereof. You know, I think this is something the town should really consider. Um, adding to the bylaws to allow that these things become uh, you know, more prevalent because it's, you know, simply because of, you know, the, the costs of homes today. Um. I'll give you a, a good example back when I first bought here in ninety five. I, I lovingly restored an eighteen fifty circa farmhouse. And a few years later, when my mother needed to leave the marital home in Worcester, there was just too much for her. As luck would have it, a house became available two doors down. Wonderful, you know? And she was able to sell the marital home and move to the smaller home that was much more suited to her needs. And, and as she's aged, you know, she was becoming having memory issues and, you know, it just, it became imperative to have somebody nearby that could look after her. So it was, was great that we could have her walk up to the house and share meals with her and she still had some independence of her own. Where she could come and go as she pleased and, and have her own furniture and do her own shopping. And as time went on, you know, that we just became even it, it, her memory became to the point where we had to move her into the house. Because, you know, she was kind of walking around the neighborhood and getting lost and it was just like uh, the two AM phone call from, you know, to my wife's cell phone, asking, is Laurie there? And I said to myself, who the heck is this? You know? Oh, it's, it's Charlton Police Department. We have your mother here. I'm like, oh, okay. It's, you know, do, do any of you want to spend your final years in a nursing home? Right? Do any of you? Look, I don't. I don't plan to. Yeah, I want to, I want to live and die in my Charlton home. And I think this makes sense. For you know, your parents, your, you know, your, your mother, your, your grandmother, whomever, who needs additional help can live on the same piece of property and yet maintain their independence. You know, we, you know, with nearby and you can walk to help provide care for the individual and or your, your kids returning from college. I mean, the, the rents are, are astronomical. If you can even find, I tried to even in this town, there's very few rents we had anyway. And you try to buy anything in this town, it's here, it's north of four hundred thousand dollars. So, and that's, you know, a lower price home. So the kids can't come, you know, can't afford to grow up here and then come back to live here. It's not right. So my proposal is, is to have a, this zoning uh, a bylaw change or a bylaw change rather, that would allow construction of ADUs. And I got a copy here for, for all to, you know, have a look at.
You're specifically talking about detached.
Detached, right. And this, and this forty seven communities in Massachusetts that currently allow some form of ADUs. And out of eleven of those um, they allow fully detached ADUs or small homes. So I revised this several times with various in my own mind. And a source, you know, this is something that the board would have to review and, and, you know, make other recommendations for and possibly, you know, uh, consider, you know, voting on and, and then have a public hearing. I guess ultimately is what we, we'd like to have. Um. And, you know, I also have some information packets here. Um, that unfortunately Kristen, who was supposed to come here with me tonight was uh, had to be at a funeral. And she put together this uh, PowerPoint package. That it's got tons and tons of information that I'd like each one of you to have. And possibly follow along with me.
You're thinking.
So obviously, we all know what an ADU is on page one. You know, there's no need for me to, you know, go over that. But on the second page, you'll see, you know, what's driving this movement, you know, it's, you know, it's the housing cost, it's the lack of housing. It's the rents, as I've already mentioned. And then, you know, the fifth paragraph down, you know, it's the multi-generational living. We, we really need to consider that to help out not only our elderly. And, and how about yourselves? Well, what, as we age, you know, we're becoming a nation that's well over sixty five. Um, it's the fact that somewhere in this, uh, it says a fifty two percent of us are going to be over sixty five by twenty thirty out of the whole nation. So, you know, why wouldn't it make sense to, you know, uh, move yourself into that ADU and then let your kids take over the primary family home? And, and they, they can help you out as you age. AARP has a lot of information on uh, the, on the third page there. Um. They're definitely in favor of this. There's the stat I was just talking of. By twenty thirty, one out of five people in the US should be sixty five or over. That's, that's significant. All right, by twenty thirty four, the number of adults older than sixty five will be greater than the number of children under eighteen. It's like, holy cow. Right? What are we going to do about that? And then on that, that fifth page, it's, as I mentioned earlier, you got forty seven towns in mass that allow some type of ADU currently. And out of eleven of those, they allow the fully detached. And it mentions shows you here in bold uh, base, you know, Chester, Montgomery, Westfield, Westwood, Worthington. On Cape Cod, you get Chatham, Dennis, Wellfleet, Yarmouth. All allow the detached ADUs. So, so why not have Charl- Charlton be, you know, a leader in central Massachusetts? To, you know, sort of pioneer these things. Instead of, you know, being last on the list, let's, let's be, let's be out in the forefront. And, and make headway on something like this. The state of Maine, the next page shows state of Maine allows it statewide. So they're, they're well ahead of us in, in that uh, and there's some stats here on New Hampshire as well. Where uh, some allow the fully detached and some of the uh, the attached or like they, they call it sometimes it's a garage renovation or a, a loft renovation. And you can see that the number of ADUs are, you know, one point five million of them are estimated in the United States right now. Does an ADU add value to the home? You sure bet it does. So there's, there's a, this is a win, win, win situation. It's win for the town. It will increase the uh, tax base for the town. It'll allow the multi-generational living for families in need of that that way to go. And I'm hoping that uh, one of my kids will help me age in my home as I get older and possibly uh, you know, live right next door. And then who doesn't know about the housing prices? Oh my gosh, you know, it's like it's like we're, we're in a, a crisis. And then look at these cute little things here, you know, there, there's a, an example of under three hundred square feet. You've got this uh, this cute little uh, residence. It's, this one is probably just a one bedroom. But they're, they're attractive. They're not these crappy, they're not sheds. Most of them are high ceilings. Um, you know, they're well designed, well engineered, well insulated. No, here's an example of a one bedroom one. Two hundred to six hundred square feet on, on the, on the smaller ones. And then as you go through, you'll see um, examples of two bedroom ones. And then further down, you'll see ones of what a tiny home might look like towards the end. you'll see ones of what a tiny home might look like towards the end. Here's a really modernistic, uh, two bedroom one there. With vertical siding, only five hundred and thirty five square feet. You can build these for around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the best part. You know, you can take out a small mortgage on your home, put up one of these, you've got grandma in the backyard. Or you've got the junior coming home from college. You know, it's like they can live independently on your property and yet not be under your roof. Give them independence. It it's like I said, it's it's a win-win-win situation for everybody concerned. And I think it makes sense for the town and the board to start thinking about, you know, uh, allowing these to happen in this town. Here's a, here's a nice attractive one there, right? This would be like a a small cottage. You know, very unique, very beautiful.
So it it certainly is an interesting idea and and we talked about it in the past. Um, and some of the the concerns that are promoted is, you know, um, what zones to be allowing and if you allow it. If it's certain zones, certain square footage. What's to prevent somebody from putting up a small home and just renting it out and and basically doubling the the footprint of of the neighborhood. So, I mean, one one thing that caused me to move to Charlton was the space and and the open space and the large lots and, uh, you know, more of a rural community. And I just think if if this, if everybody did this, it would compact some of these developments that we have to to the point where it's no longer that rural town anymore. It's it's becomes its own little city with two houses per lot instead of one house per lot.
I I've thought of that and and some of the bylaw here, I've actually limited some of the language to so that these ADUs would be no more than two bedroom. Okay, and then six bedroom max with the primary home. And but of course, the septic system in the well would have to be adequate for six bedrooms or five bedrooms if it's a one bedroom ADU. Or, you know, what what, you know, so there you have criteria in here that limits how many persons you're adding to town.
So why couldn't you do that within attached?
Uh, well,
Why would you need to do that as a detached separate building?
Well, I think for independence. For independence, you know, if your if your in-laws or your parents are are gonna come and live with you, they can feel like they're living independently, you know, on their own without your being under the same roof. Cause if you're attached, you're technically you're under the same roof. So therefore, the detachment makes sense. In fact, this kind of goes along with what the woman that was speaking, well, this is a little early, the low impact. You know, and I've proposed this primarily in the agricultural zone, which is already acre and a half. So we got sixty thousand square feet. So to it's only gonna be, so you're not gonna be able to put in any of the the smaller lake areas because the lots are simply too small. So you're limiting it to the larger lots only. So I think that will keep the rural. I moved here myself for the rural character. In fact, I I say, you know, I'm so I'm not saying do as I say, not as I do. I think this makes sense. Uh, and certainly this can be critiqued further. Uh, you know, by the board, if they feel like there's something that could limit it even further. But I don't feel like it's gonna ruin the rural character of the town. And that's certainly something I would not want myself.
And and I know that it came up when we we did the bylaws, who did it two years ago? I know it came up. I know that there was an email that I think I received from a from a property owner wanting to do that and for the same reasons. You wanna have the mother, mother-in-law and parents closer, okay, then it happens health-wise. But I just, um, I think one of the consensus of the board was, do you wanna change the character of how it is? And again, back to your point of how you have it limited, let's just say in the sixty thousand square feet, say if you only have sixty thousand square feet, but you so you legitimately have the two thirds of that of that sixty thousand to use, cause if you have wetlands on your property. Then how would that look? You've taken almost forty thousand square feet, which is a one acre lot, which is R forty. You're trying to put two individual structures on, that kind of cramps it a little bit.
Maybe you could add a clause that would add that specific element to a sixty thousand square foot lot.
It would be, but you always have the ability to put the in-law in or, um, I'm just trying to think.
So I I mean, I think that's what we came up with, is is you have the opportunity to do a deep, uh, sorry, an attached. But covers the 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 need for it in most cases. And the 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 door that we would open by allowing detached could change the character, could could cause additional development in lots that really don't. Now, I've got a, you know, acre and a half and use some rental income, so I'm gonna put another house behind me and driver will service that one too. Now I've got two houses on a small lot. It's no longer a large lot residential neighborhood. It's now I've taken that sixty thousand square foot lot and I've divided it by two and I've got thirty thousand square foot lot. So it kind of takes away from what ours only requires. So you do have the ability to do it in an attached accessory dwelling, uh, in-law apartment, so to say, even rent that out if you wanted to.
I'm aware of that.
With a completely separate entrance, doesn't have to have interior shared wall or doors.
But I mean, if if you've got something attractive like this, you know, in your in your backyard that, I mean, it it could almost look like a small shed. You know, and it's not gonna, you know, adversely affect. Uh, you know, it's gonna certainly increase the value of that property. To have, you know, something that's attractive and something that you could rent, you know, if if you needed to. Or your or your kids could live there, you know? Or or you live there yourself and and when when you get old enough that's like, I need help. I I wanna move there myself.
I I understand why you would wanna do that. I I do get that. If if the neighbors on both sides of me did that, I'd feel a little claustrophobic. So it's it's also thinking about the neighborhood and not just the property owner, but the other property owners that do want that. So how do you protect the other landowners that that want that rural character and don't want to be overcrowded with houses? And that's why they bought in that large lack of elements. So so it's it's, I understand the need for it. I understand the want for it. But we've kind of met a halfway middle ground with the with it with an attached. So you can serve a purpose with the attached. You do the detached and now you're really changing the character.
Let me throw something else at you, okay? Because you make a good point there, but why not? Let's say then we take out the clause that says existing homes. And we only allow this for a new development. That way, if you're gonna buy in that new development, let's say if you're gonna, you're gonna have an LCD like this woman's talking about, low impact zone. Now, you're so that's you're selling it with that. Okay, so if you don't wanna live, move into that area, here's the clause. The clause says, nope, it's only gonna be approved on a new development only. Take out the existing home thing here. This is, I wanna get the dialogue going. I think it makes sense.
You gotta run into trouble with offset it. So that'd be a cluster zoning with all that.
And we do allow that.
It would be a cluster zone, so they'd be putting green spaces in between the development. So already you're gonna have a a small footprint for the house. And if if there's no sewer or water.
How you're talking a smaller lot sizes.
Smaller lot size.
But this keeps the larger lot sizes.
Really, if you're putting two houses on it?
Well, let's say we're gonna build small houses or tiny homes. And then you let's say you're gonna have tiny homes on the said lot with the ADU. So now maybe you're limiting the whole thing to two bedrooms each for the for the two.
Exactly. We're gonna buy a lot and Charlton put a tiny home on it. Cause the cost of the profit, the land.
What are you saying? It's the two tiny homes, though. Create smaller lots with with.
I mean, this, I think this is This kind of circles back to what your dad was saying to him about his type of development with the with the covenant and the smaller, smaller lots.
And that might be the way to go.
I have, I have a suggestion. Uh, we we have just done our diagnostic and we did all our zoning bylaws last year.
Yes.
We updated them. In the attempt to become modern, took a little time to come to cover it. But the bottom line with that process is that we wanted to start talk with a new master plan for the town. And I think this probably would fit into, um, what I just said earlier. We're gonna hopefully, I don't know, we've even kicked that discussion off on how to 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 start that ball rolling down the hill, but that would be a a bunch of towns, people coming together, having meetings, public open meetings, seeing what their view of the town would be. And trying to to fit new ideas like yourselves, yours and others. Everybody has ideas. Into a new vibrant plan for the future for the town.
So instead of pushing something into an existing zone, create a new zone for
So we're trying to stop, yeah, we're just trying to stop all this, not trying to stop, not not saying stop, but try to control it as a growth, a plan to grow. Instead of kind of an ad hoc kind of piecemeal piecemeal there, so we can can present something to the town or or people will know clear boundaries of where things will be allowed and what businesses could be allowed or what mixed development could be allowed and maybe what what area of tiny houses or additional housing could.
Right, but now it looks like you you almost sound like you're making another zoning class.
It could be that, it could be, it could be a lot of things.
Really, it could be based on lot size, say you have a larger tract of land. So, you know, they even redevelop, I would develop instead of uh, provincial subdivision, you come up with something like that with that particular lot of land.
That that's exactly kind of what I had in mind.
Something hundred thousand square feet or
Yeah, whatever, you know, there obviously gotta be a little bit bigger tract of land, especially with all the wells. So if you made it on a larger tract where they could, uh, for lack of a better term, develop the community. Right, you know, and I mean, I you you probably have more experience in this stuff than I do, but when you're trying to put a second septic system more in line, the septic system on it. I ran into this the last time I worked at that. The septic system made it costly here to do this, like because of the setback from the septic side based on the number of bedrooms. But if you take a a big tract of land and then, I don't know, whatever, that they develop with the sense of dealing with that at the same time, so that tract is, you know, somehow, I don't, however they come up with the way they handle septic and water and if water's using, you know, it's a problem, it's always a septic. Do they need a certain amount of room to get that septic in?
Definitely. I mean, there's anaerobic digester systems, there's all types of systems that allow for a large, larger development. Centralized, centralized septic system.
So and that might be a doable thing for a development such as if there are a tactical common septic system.
So now we're talking about smaller lot size, more clustered developments. He's still looking for, uh, lack of a better word, an in-law apartment on an existing house and an existing thing. So maybe maybe we look at lot size. If you've got three acres of land, you know, or have some minimum size of of the property that these would be allowed on. But, you know, you can't do it on sixty thousand square feet, but if you've got three acres, maybe we look at something like that.
But let's say you have forty acres. And you wanna put, you know, a a flexible development in that'll already allow you to build on uh, forty thousand square feet with a hundred feet of frontage. So why doesn't that make sense to to start with something like that? That allows this in in a development like that. So that way, anyone who's gonna buy into it knows already, okay, well, yeah, we're gonna have some maybe smaller homes with ADUs. And when we accept that.
If there's smaller lots and smaller homes, why not just purchase two lots and build two homes?
Now you need two septic systems and two wells. This is this, this, again, we're back to the affordability. We can't afford four hundred thousand dollar homes gone. It's got, we we wanna keep our kids living here.
But when you take a lot that size, it's very difficult, like a flexible subdivision. Go talk to any of the guys doing flexible subdivision now, they have a tough time fitting the house and the septic on, never mind trying to put another house on, another structure for residents on that. To try and meet setbacks for all three, building, well and septic. Cause not only you have to worry about your own setback, you gotta worry about your neighbor's setback. Which you gotta even worry about too.
And that's part of the discussion discussion about a master plan is where to bring the water, where to bring sewer, considering the moment. To open up some more, the the town further.
Sure, but now you're back to costs, like, you know, you're back to major infrastructure required. You know, I'm, we're trying to make this as inexpensive as possible, you know? Soon or later, the state's gonna start mandating us that we, you're gonna do this because we're gonna allow it. So, you know, let's get ahead of the curve. Let's let's, before the state shoves something down our throat, let's say, okay, because everybody, we've got all these extra people coming in here now and there's no place to put them. And and pretty soon the state's gonna be at the point where they're gonna say, you do this, you do this and you do that and and you're gonna allow it. So if we can get ahead of them and say, listen, this is what we're doing in our community. We think this makes sense. Let's so leave us alone. We're we're already doing it. You know, it's it's coming. It's coming. You can't stop it. And you've got all these people, they're gonna be over sixty five. In a very few years, we we need to help these people out and ourselves. We're, none of us are spring chickens here anymore.
That we have to be ready. That we would have to be ready or someone would have to be ready to address the town meeting. Is what happens when that family member's done with it.
When the family's done with it?
Rental property in an area where they don't intend to have rental properties. It's one thing if the family.
It's certainly a gray area, Randy. I don't, I'm not sure.
I mean, this, I got something, I think the residents of Charlton would be asking, not necessarily the planning board.
Most of the areas that allow this, it's owner occupancy. How do you enforce that?
Well, 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 you you can't, but 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 that's, but I think when, if you're gonna limit the ADU to no more than two bedrooms, you're not gonna have a family of four move into two bedrooms, right? You're gonna have probably an older couple, someone who's just come out of college. You know, it's not like you're gonna overflow the school system with six more kids, not in a two bedroom joint. Right? It's gonna be, it's gonna be retirees or or kids just just starting out. You know, it's gonna, it it makes sense. You know, however you need to edit this down to to make it feasible to to pass a town meeting. I think it'll pass, cause you know, we're all in the same boat. None of us are getting any younger. And if you, and if you don't wanna end up in a nursing home, here's how you do it.
There's no room in nursing homes. People are waiting in hospitals. I'm a nurse. People are waiting in hospitals for one to two months. I have two friends that have family members that are waiting two months. They cannot find a bed
No kidding.
For their family.
Wow, that's significant.
But if they're only being in a nursing home, what's the likelihood of them being in an ADU? If they can't care for themselves.
Well, okay, so so as my mother aged, I've got direct experience with this with my wife. And and my wife works at, uh, ASMCN, which is an aiding surgeon service access point in North Central Mass. She's familiar with this. It's, they try to keep people in their homes. And some people need lots of care and some people need minimal care. So it all depends on one situation. So if you're just a minimal care person, then okay, this this kind of thing makes sense. Cause now you can move your parents in and and you look at, look in on them once a day, maybe you do shopping for them. And yet they're independent. And they're not living under your roof, which is, you know, you're back to the accessory apartments. They're living under your roof. They don't have independence there. If your kids move back from college, they don't wanna go back and live with mommy and daddy. They wanna live on their own. This is how you do it. This makes sense, it's win, win, win for the town, for the residents. For the, you know, people that are aging and, and young people that can't afford to buy the four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollar home. They can't afford that.
So some of these areas that do allow it. He said the, the, the boulder, the white ones are the ones that allow.
That allow the full detached.
Everything else is.
It, it's, it's a.
To be attached?
It, it's, they're attached or they're, or they require one door in from the, the main residence.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly, so there's eleven towns that allow the fully detached.
I'd be interested to see what kind of. Subdivision and zoning regulations they have for some of these. Detached accessory doors, what some of these towns require.
Our heads are listed down very here.
Maybe we can like, maybe we can even, either you or, or, um, maybe when we get this no impact development. Before, maybe we can, we can fold that into something that they do, kinda get some of that verbiage and just look at what they require and. And, uh, see how they support it and restrict it.
That makes sense, in fact, this was a great lead in for, for what I'm talking about here. I think, uh, you know, the affordability, you know, not having to do the cluster. Cause now, even if you reduce the lots, now you're in the two separate system, two wells. I mean, that's, wells are like out of, out of sight right now, they're, they're thirteen, fifteen grand for a well, it used to be four grand.
Yeah.
Like ten years ago, it's crazy. So.
So I.
Okay, the reason for that.
Yeah, yeah. Let's just say, I don't think I'd support it on, on minimum sized lots. Um, with something larger than minimum, it, it's definitely worth looking at.
Right, do you think it's supported on a sixty thousand, like?
Like I said, that's a sixty thousand is a minimum lot size for, for that, I probably would not support it if that's for sixty thousand, but. If you've got a hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred thousand in that. Zone, it might be something to look at.
So you mean increased the lot size?
Well, no, what I'm saying is that some of these lots, the agricultural zones are larger than sixty thousand square feet.
True.
Yeah. So in, in this, in that. In an area like that.
Right.
Possibility, but if you've got a development that, that's all sixty thousand square foot lots.
Yeah.
You know, that's a, that's a, that's the minimum size for a lot in that development, and adding additional houses to a minimum sized lot like that. Would definitely take away the character of, of the neighborhood, that's not the, the, the rural living that a lot of these people move here.
But if you did it at, on a case by case basis.
The problem with going case by case is, is subjective. Um, and you deny it from one person, but allow it for another one.
No, I'm saying if, only in a flexible development, you wanna do it on a, on a, you know, your twenty-two foot road, I think is.
Right with the flexible development, they're only where you find that.
Well, you're, you're talking about adding it to existing homes, you're not talking about a development that, that allows it by trying to begin with.
I, I know.
It's just something completely different.
No, I'm looking to, I'm looking to push it forward with whatever makes sense. If it makes sense to do it only in a new cluster development where it's flexible development on. These smaller frontage with the smaller areas, and if you limit it to the size of the home potentially. You say you're gonna build a, a, a flexible development of tiny homes, but you want each tiny home to have an ADU. Okay, now you can still have multi-generational living. On the same lot with one septic system and one well, we're back to affordability folks. We can't.
The, the flexible development sized lots will not work for those.
So there's, there's way to allow affordability.
To cost it.
There, there, there's other ways to allow affordable workforce housing, affordability. Shed septic systems and, and things like that as part of a single development, um, but.
The reason why a lot of the development, as you know, build the bigger houses because they need that money to incorporate the investment in the land and.
Right.
The thing that goes to it.
Right.
Just a, it's just a. Right, we would buy, build smaller houses if they'd be able to afford to, to, you know, get a, get a decent profit back on. On what they're building, so it, I like the idea, I, I think it's, I think it's feasible somehow, somewhere, you know.
Yeah.
But it needs to.
Just need to figure out the.
You know, talk it out somehow.
Right. But you don't think it could, it could happen within this LID? You know, you know, if you're gonna have, you know, already, we already allow the flexible development. We already allow that on reduced frontage, we already allow that on slightly smaller lots, but if you, let's say you reduce the size of the home. Let's say you don't build these McMansions that you have to get your money back on, you know, let's say maybe you build the three-bedroom ranch. With the two-bedroom ADU. You know, again, you, you know, you, you've got one septic system, one well.
The entire house lot is eighty thousand.
If you build one big colonial, make more money.
You're almost talking about a zone, back to the, you know, like a, an equitable zone. You know, that can be forged out of, you know, an area. That hasn't seen a lot of development or has the possibility to, right, to, to, to accept that.
Well, we're, we're getting more and more built out in this town, and what's left is basically. Wetland and lots, little bit here and there, you know, we, we, we have to stop thinking out of the box. You know, we can't just take, keep the conventional thinking and then not think out of the box, we gotta move forward. You know, because that state is gonna come down our throats and say, nope, you guys don't have any affordable housing in your town. Or you don't have ten percent.
Yep.
Yeah, so why can't we go back and say, well, look at, state, this is what we're doing. It, it's, we, we can, we can raise our hands and say, yep, we're doing the LID and we're doing flexible developments with ADUs. We're doing our part.
But if you do that, which is all kind of good, is. You do, to reconsider the affordable housing, it's limited income requirement.
All right.
Well, I think that only takes place when you're putting in a development and you have to have X amount of units that are affordable. That doesn't mean they all have to be.
No, no, you, you are correct, but my point is, in order for them to qualify for affordable housing, they have to be income.
Right.
You know, the strategic number on the.
Sure. So you have ten percent of the, of said flexible development, you know, that you're gonna designate as affordable. With the income requirements and the rest of it are gonna be at market value.
Yeah. So I'm still hearing two different things, I'm hearing affordable homes, with two ADUs on a small lot.
Yeah.
And, and also, uh, ADUs on existing property to allow in-laws and, and rental units.
Well, I mean, that was, that's, like I said, I, I revised this a bunch of times, John. I, I'm looking for the board to, to put in their input to see what we can do. To maybe eliminate a paragraph or two, maybe take out the whole paragraph on existing and just do it in new development only. And that way we're not, you know, if you think that's ruining the character, well, if you're gonna do it on forty, you know, forty acres. And you're gonna put an X amount of lots on forty acres, you know, make it so that it's. Workable in some way, shape or form.
So I think we definitely need to discuss some way to get more affordable housing in, in, in areas, and we talked about this before. Um, we've talked to other people that have proposed certain areas for smaller homes, title lots, workforce housing. Um, more affordable for, for younger families and, and, and lower income, so.
Right.
We've discussed that in the past, it's something that we need to really, I think we need to look at it sooner than later. Because it's, it's, uh, with, with a large retail distribution company coming in.
Sure.
Um, there's gonna be a lot of people working there and showing through town that are gonna be looking for homes and. You know, a lot of them won't be able to afford what's on the market now or, or what we currently have to offer, so.
Exactly.
Um, something we need to figure out where and how best to do it, so.
Right.
It's, yeah, it's on our radar.
Okay.
Um, in, in different forms.
Yeah.
Not necessarily the form that you, you presented here.
And again, this is up for revision, this is just simply getting the ball rolling and, and getting you all talking. Because we need to do something about, get making, nobody can afford five hundred thousand dollar homes anymore. Listen, but my kid's not gonna be able to. Where, where, is he gonna have to go live in an apartment that's gonna cost him two grand a month in Worcester?
That's why you have your couch still. I've got three kids.
There you go, right, exactly, but would, wouldn't you rather have them in the backyard, John?
Four kids, excuse me, three or four.
Sure. So, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, maybe, I'm not in that situation now, my, my youngest left in the house is thirteen, but. I've got a few years yet, but you know what, I think I would, I would like to build the ADU in the backyard and then.
Put the thirteen-year-old out there?
No, 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 I'm saying an X amount. No, I'm saying an X amount of years, and then I move out of the, the farmhouse that I lovingly restored and I move into the ADU with the wife.
I, I think there's, I didn't, um, my neighbor had a tiny house. And I believe it wasn't, he, he wasn't able to have anybody in it after a while.
Oh, yeah, Chris?
Yeah.
On wheels, right?
Yeah, it's, it's on wheels, is that why, or?
I don't know, I know he went, he did a cross-country trip.
Yeah.
With it.
Yeah. So, but I see it's still out there.
It's more of a mobile home then, if he's taking it across country.
Well, it's kind of, it's, it's pretty neat, so these tiny homes are mobile.
Yeah, well, well, something like this is not.
Nope.
This, this, this is a, you know, a, a stick-built or, or a factory-built structure.
Different.
And it, you know, it's very attractive.
Yeah.
You know, who wouldn't wanna live there?
One of the benefits of a tiny home is that people like, if it's a true tiny home like you're talking about. Is it can be removed once you're done using it versus this is gonna be a permanent structure on a ride age and this and that.
But as we age and we wanna downsize and we don't wanna leave our kids with a big mess. You live in something like this and then, you know, when you pass on, your kids have this to either rent or move into or sell.
I need five of those to put all my crap in.
Yeah, so the, the problem with that is now you're talking about selling a home that's on the.
No, you can't, no, no.
You just.
No, no. No, no, you can't, well, you'd have to sell the two of them, right, no, this, this would be a single owner or, or whatever, who's ever on the deed. You can't sell off half of it.
But that, that's the devil's in the detail.
Oh, exactly.
They would have to.
Right.
Make sure it's.
Right, but to keep the affordability down, that's where the, the, the two residences on one property with one septic system and one well. That's, you know, that is where your affordability comes in.
Or if you have town water and town sewer.
Yeah. Well, then, I guess, well, if it's gonna be a development, then is the development gonna accept the town water and sewer, I don't know.
Yeah, the water already has it.
Well, we have renovations and that.
Right, right.
All right, Jeff, thank you very much for your time and all this, this very valuable information that we had, like Don said, we're gonna consider it, especially once we get that stuff in. From my C M R P C.
Yeah, and what's the name of that organization?
C M R P C, Central Mass Regional Planning.
Uh-huh, and, and they are, they're gonna give us a grant based on if you adopt their.
Why?
We have to apply for it.
Uh-huh.
Just then we'll benefit to. They'll implement into our bylaws if we so choose, in our meeting that have to itself.
Yes.
Right. Which is the most important thing.
Right, they're the people that helped us with our.
Our zone.
Okay, yeah. Well, I was on the master, the original master plan committee back in the day, all right, so. What's our?
Twenty years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was.
It's time for another one, so.
Yeah, well, maybe I'll join again.
Hey, guess the person that joined the board again.
Are they looking for members currently?
Uh, we haven't started, we haven't started.
Is there gonna be, uh, some public information?
We're, we're gonna need to get funding from it at a town meeting, so.
We actually got money from the town, so aside to the master plan.
Yeah.
Uh, what we did earlier this year is buy for a grant to. Get more money so that we can pay for. Professional to help us with a thorough review of the master plan, then of course we're gonna. We gotta include all the town committees, organizations and everything in the process.
Okay, well, ultimately, anything that this one bylaw change would have to happen via, not only you people approving it, but then going. Oh, yeah. The elected selectmen and then in a town vote.
Town meeting.
Yeah, so, I mean, wouldn't it go from you to the selectman first and then?
Us to the town meeting, well, they have to put it on the agenda, but yeah, they would have no say with that.
Yeah, they would look at it and then they would make a recommendation if they want to.
Okay.
Either. Support it or not.
Supported or not supported.
I see.
Either way, it would come up to a town meeting.
I see, so, and then I guess, of course, from here, I mean, could we, after you've had time to digest and think about it. And make recommendations, could we have a public hearing on this issue?
You have to.
Yeah.
By law, you have.
Sure, so is that something you guys would consider doing?
I'd like to have the rest of the board here before we go ahead and do that.
Yeah, and then let's get some more input from.
Yeah, we are.
It is on our minds, it is on, it, it is something that we talk about occasionally, when we have time in the meeting.
Okay.
Um, you're not the first person to think this idea, I've been looking to be have discussed it. I think there are some options out there.
Great.
Not, not necessarily, um, exactly the way it's worded here, but there, there are options to serve the same purpose. Uh, and get lower, lower affordable housing where we want the affordable housing, but towards forced that approach, wherever it goes.
Exactly.
Yep.
Well, thank you, Don.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
John, Randy, appreciate all your time very much, thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
All right, next up, we've got some A and I's for, uh. He barely wrote it, puts one of his one fifty.
Do I have to review, want one of these packets?
Thanks. Have a good night everyone.
Thank you.
What was the, uh?
So dividing my mind to four lots of the leaving is on Bailey Road.
Yes, that's the first one listed, hooking the three, three house lots. Leave A and I's here.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, this is a line, so. This existing house will remain on this lot and then create three more. Yeah, so this is one that already is the house.
Your property or you and a mother?
And then, so you're creating, you, you're leaving this lot with the house on it and then you're creating three more lots. Right, for one fifteen.
That's what they're saying. I'm not doing it.
Oh, I don't know, I mean, that's what being approached here.
They all have sufficient frontage and they all have.
Yes.
Proper upland.
More than enough.
Yeah, they have more than adequate fronts, they're actually pretty large lots.
Six plus nine plus.
This is my property up here.
Okay, gotcha. All right, you have a motion to approve the A and I to create three lots?
I don't understand what, can I?
Yeah, go right ahead, absolutely.
I don't even know why I came, only that I knew that it was involving my parents' property.
Okay.
Um, my brother had told me that, someone told him that this was coming on the planning board, um, scheduled tonight. And I said, well, I'll go, but I don't know what I have to say, I don't know what kind of question to ask, I really don't.
So, and, and A and R is, is, is an approval not required. So it's, it's basically if it suits the, the purpose and it has the sufficient area frontage. And can be a legal lot. It could be a legal lot, and it's more of just a.
This what?
Process that.
So these plans came from the surveyor bringing them to the town, is that how that happened?
By request of the landowner.
Yeah.
The proffing owner.
Yeah, the landowner will request the survey to draw it up.
Yeah, that, the landowner is my mother's trust. But my sister and the lawyer were the ones that had the surveyor, so I really knew not, I knew about this. Because I'm getting these same plans at my house, but, um. Because I'm getting the same plans at my house, but, um. I just didn't know why I came or what I was coming for. Um, it's just mostly to approve that these are a legal amount of lots with.
Yep, so it is a rule from the board, then they record it at the courthouse, then they can read, then it's a legal document that it.
And then it goes back into one of those books that has all of those lands, like when I came and looked at my property.
This point, there's no houses or anything being approved, they're creating.
Okay. Okay.
It could be, it's, they're subdividing this large piece of property into four separate.
Well, now, when, say, my sister gets this property, I have. Um, and she goes to sell it, does it recome back to this?
Only she wants to subdivide this anymore.
Yeah.
Because she has seventeen acres, sixteen acres, or seventeen acres total and how many?
Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily see him again, if they, we're just gonna build one house on this piece of property. It's a legal lot. Be a building from it to the building.
And that becomes a separate lot in the book instead of having one lot, now you have four separate lots that can be sold, transferred, however.
Yeah. Um, okay, and I guess if I had more questions, I don't wanna waste you guys' time, I don't have to ask one of you guys.
Well, these lots, these lots are subdivided already on that circuit.
Um, I'm trying to figure out where we are.
Doesn't show.
This is East Bailey's Road, because this is where we are right here, because that sun is built, it comes down.
Yeah.
Ebeli's is here.
This is one big piece right here, and then his is, the others is like, yeah.
I thought, I thought he's all staked out for houses already in there.
They were staked out, but I didn't know if they were houses or if they were staked out for wetlands or, or, um.
Who had the wedding?
Just, that would be like a good wedding spot.
That was friggin gorgeous.
Oh, it's beautiful.
It was a gorgeous wedding.
Oh, my God.
Um, this piece is where my brother lives and this is staying in the trust in my brother's land. Um, but my brother's selling his house because he does not wanna see houses be built. Yeah, it's killing me, all this stuff is killing me. Um, but my mother left acreage to all three of us, um. And my sister gets more acreage because we originally had ten acres that went with our houses. And my sister's just doesn't give shit about nothing and she wants to sell it all. So, it's killing me. Hopefully, somebody rich buys one big chunk and it, um, over here. And it's, you know, they build a farm over there, but I tend to go down.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to accept this A N R as, I think this, or East Bailey's Road, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Yeah.
You wanna get it first?
You were, maybe you were encouraged to take it with you tonight? Will you actually take it with you?
That's your plan?
No.
Oh, oh, you're funny, oh, you just come to see it.
I was just coming.
Oh, okay.
Or you know about this.
Yes.
I call your brother a little bit, but I live around the corner, but you know.
Alright, next up, we've got another A N R on Ebeli's Road. We're creating one lot.
Nobody, I, I've got a room to buy my mother's.
Yeah.
Well, I just go out to sign a paper with the lawyer about this. Who, um, sent me the agreement on mine and I got a really quick.
Bailey's Road.
Yep.
Wonder what goes in.
My god, he's gonna move in there.
They, they just take them one lot and, you know, they didn't have.
Ebeli's Road here, his sound is there.
Yeah, this is across the street.
This is the one that, yes, across the street. There's a larger tract and they're breaking it now or cutting it to two lots.
Okay, so instead of one big lot, they're cutting off the end. Four acres, five acres?
That's alright.
Up here is.
So, I'm just trying on, the West King Road, probably like, right here.
There a little, uh, coming out here. There it is.
Right across the street from King.
Yeah. So, a lot of this is my, what my sister's supposed to be getting, um. Can you guys tell me, because I don't really read this very well, does this gets separated from this?
Yeah, so this is, this line here is the new property line, so basically this was one big property.
Yeah.
The new property line, so you've got one lot here and one lot here now.
This is all included in this, you know, this right here?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out where that pond is and where the time grow is, this is all wetlands considered?
Like the pond is right back in here. When I grow, this is all the higher spot, back down like, so it comes down.
Alright, I'm just trying to figure out, how many houses do you think my sister can put in there?
Well, this is right on Stanley's, so this is all the play, yeah, this is.
Well, this is a field, right here.
Yeah, they, I mean, they, they can put in basically acre and a half lots if you don't.
Okay, this is a road, the little stone path that comes on it.
So, the what?
Nine acres.
I'm gonna have a hundred and fifty.
For all.
So, if, if this is the frontage on the property, uh, I don't know how, how far, how long is this, so this is two hundred and. Now, so this is four nineteen, this is two fifty. And then this is.
I mean, I guess.
I think you'll probably get three or four.
Three or four.
Yeah, three or four.
And then, what, what do you think the potential of, um?
On this one?
No, this is gonna be in the trust.
Okay, gotcha.
My brother's trust, so she, she can get that part, but then when my mother's house was on that other part.
It'll be over here.
Yeah, um, it had like three or four acres below where my mother's little well is and.
Right down here.
That's gonna kill me because there's never been a house there before and we might be able to, we might be looking at a house and I don't have the money to buy that.
I make a motion to approve the subdivision, I made the, um.
Later.
A N R forward. Zero, East Bailey's Road.
I'll second.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Why do they call it zero?
Because those, no number there. Usually it comes and doesn't get a three dad, right, it didn't tell there's an actual structure on it.
Okay. Thank you. Do you live on Ebeli's Road? I heard you talking about Chris's little house.
I live.
Oh, you did?
You're welcome. Thanks for joining us and sitting through all that, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know.
I, I figured it over, darling.
Yeah.
Probably for this one, yeah.
And a flag and.
Yeah. You seem to fly.
I did.
I didn't know somewhere it's flying, the white flag is up there.
Yeah, that's it. Actually, I happened to be in here one though.
Yeah.
Her sister's been dropping zon.
I can't say, I've been out there very many times in my.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
No, it's nice, it's nice, but the thing is, she's like, oh, my brother, you see, you couldn't believe that it was marked well, and she's been moaning.
Yeah, yeah.
All those years, but it is what it is. Alright, next up, we have a, um, North Service Road solar, I think, no extension request, doesn't extend to eleven eighteen twenty twenty four. Since the solar foundation, we've been having issues with getting electrical service for that, so we're gonna come in through.
That, that project is just about ready to be under construction. They have, they were held up by National Grid for quite some time, but they've actually done site clearing again. Putting in lotion control measures, so they're getting ready to build.
Make a motion to extend the North Service Road solar or postpone to, uh, solar approval extension to eight. Sorry, eleven eighteen twenty twenty four.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now, next up, we have North Service Road, scenic road, start from A N R, six century. Since twenty four. Um. Well.
There's no.
Good boy.
How's it going?
Good dog.
So, I'll make a motion to send a North Service Road scenic road special permit and then approval extension to eleven twenty six twenty twenty four.
Right, you have a question?
Go right ahead.
Does that affect?
Yes, they, they, you know, so they built scenic road, wanted to get the, uh, the driveway opened. They, they needed a, uh, a special pump for the scenic road.
They need to go.
Trees, I think, there was a stone wall.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty.
That was.
Yes.
I second.
All those in favor?
I, aye.
Aye. And next up, we got Luna Meadows subdivision, A N O approval, extension request, extend to eleven thirteen twenty four. This is tied to the solid that we just extended, they did this to freeze the.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, just, so if we don't extend that, they can't do their, um.
Basically.
Yeah.
Make a motion to, uh, prove the Luna Meadows subdivision A N O extension request to eleven thirteen twenty twenty four.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, team members. Alright, uh, next up, we got some, uh, minutes to review from August ninth and September sixth, do we wanna? No big deal, do you wanna wait till the other members are here?
It's, it's up to you.
What do you guys?
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna. Yeah, you, you can, be ready for today.
No, yes.
Feel, might not have enough people to vote on or, or if you'd rather wait till next meeting, there's no problem with that, so.
Make a motion to postpone the approval of the minutes for August ninth, twenty twenty three and September sixth, twenty twenty three. Till our next meeting, which is October eighteen.
We don't have one to first one?
No.
We're not about two a month, no.
So, actually, that was, because I'm gonna be away.
Okay, wrong.
Okay.
Only ahead it's beginning of the year.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Alright, we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. And then we have, from our last meeting, we have a, uh, condition, the release of the covenants on the Jennings Road. Phase three subdivision.
Yeah, the attorney made the amendments for the, uh. Uh, he was, you know, required the easement and also that. That will be subject to the approval of the fire department. And, uh, they also, the African is actually trying to come in. And file a balance of his, uh, construction bond tomorrow. And then, they're ready to go, so.
And it's right here in number four, where lots twenty four and twenty five, with the fire system. So, it ties them in for to protect the town.
Yeah, those two lots will have to just be approved by the town fire department for catching in the drains. Whether it be for the.
Now, do we need to have a vote to sign this or not?
Uh, if you vote to approve it, then just sign it over here, yeah.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve, um, this, the basic covenants for, um, phase three Jennings Road?
Make a motion to approve the release of covenants for phase three of Jennings Road subdivision.
Let's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You said, is the one you want to sign? Does it matter what color pen?
Uh, actually.
The blue or black?
Blue, yeah, yeah, blue.
Alright.
Could you blue one?
Technical.
Now, Randy, you mentioned to me the other day, they get ready to do the, uh, pre-construction meeting on two forty one Service Road.
Yes, actually, we have this scheduled for next week, they're probably, uh.
Wow.
They get their approval from N A S D O T, whatever they needed, so.
Okay, so it's gonna be the same, do, do they have a, a candidate for it yet or are they just?
Uh, yes, I don't know who it is, you know, they're still keeping everything close to their best, so. Um, last time I talked to Haley, well, one of the times I talked to Haley Marsh about the, this one. Now, could they sub them, that's, you know, sub divided the building in that two halves, two guns and sure, just. Menu plan and everything, but that, she hasn't asked me about that, so as far as I know, so one tenant, but. Did, they're ready to go now.
Good, that's encouraging.
Yeah, that was. By the way, they waited, they must have to get their eggs in the basket with tenants or anything.
Yeah.
Waited that long.
Right?
Okay, that'll be interesting, so that, that pre-constructions meeting is coming up, huh?
Next week, yeah.
Um, how about him and Hill, where are we?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, um, we actually, Andrew, uh, goes to town ministry, he's actually a current officer. So, he's working with, uh, I gave him my hand raise, some of the things we don't have to go off to bid for.
Okay.
Would use existing, um, contractors or anything or, so we're trying to narrow down what we actually need to bid on. With the contractors for highway, yes. Um, when they, or their contractors are gonna handle, um. Fixing some of the problems here, so we just wait, I'm waiting for him to get back to me, he has my hand raised, like final. Assessment of the work that needs to be done over there, someone could, you know, they have, it has to go off to bid, like. The portion of sidewalk or something like that, they're trying to give it to a minimum because of reused contractors. It isn't, um.
Is there, um, is, is there a possibility that it could get on for the town meeting in October or is that already been closed and?
No, Andrew said he did not want to do that because it's too much of a rush, it's definitely made though.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that was a two another winter over there.
Is he, who's gonna take care of it?
Yeah, that's the only thing that I want, since it's not gonna, who's gonna take care of the power?
It's the time you're gonna have to turn it off.
Yeah, if the owners.
So, if the town took it over, are they now responsible for, for doing the filing?
Yeah.
That's something I have to ask.
Check, run it by them.
You know, it's gonna go like this.
No, I know.
Yeah, so.
Because it was just a whole, idea was since, when the board did what they did, when they did it, was to get it approved on. Over meeting, boom, town takes over.
Yep.
Problem solved.
Yeah.
Good thing is, from, from the roads.
Good thing is, from from the road standpoint, there's no issue. You know, the issues are all right. It's interesting, so. Our road standpoint.
So that's what I was thinking, if there's no issues with the road being up to up to par. The hope was to get at least the road approved, you know, even though the subdivision isn't done, but at least the road. Is approved by the town and becomes a town road.
The part and parcel of the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. As far as during this part.
The creator. Yeah, you might run in that by and him.
I had to keep asking, indeed. I was trying to, you know, explain over and over again the necessity to it, move this along and he.
What was that?
The ender.
The procurement also, also?
Yeah.
You don't have that or?
No.
So it has.
I think the prior town administrator had that and it just transferred it over when he was hired.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
What else?
How about now what's going on up with the wall failure?
I heard they replaced the whole wall.
Well, we heard anything from Michael.
Yeah, did Mike Cantray go look at that wall?
Yeah.
What'd he say?
Um, yeah, last I knew that it was supposed to have, the engineer had to submit. Something showing how they were going to fix it. The day of yesterday, I heard. I thought Kurt Matthews said that they have submitted something. I haven't seen it yet.
Wow. Was it um on the roadside?
The uh, the mill.
Wow.
Where BT Coffee was.
Mm-hmm.
That side.
Wow. What's the engineer say?
Well, that's the problem. They were trying to figure out how to fix it.
They shouldn't, shouldn't have needed to be fixed if it was engineered, right? Is that right?
Well, I I'm thinking it's.
So this is the same wall that's also on the front of it.
Yeah.
They're not tied in, but it's the same style, same.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. It's the same engineered wall.
Correct.
Catastrophic failure right there.
Yeah. So and also just to give the board a heads up because we were dealing with this last night, City Depot Road. Um, that had been a never ending nightmare. Um, now the EPA, the DEP and God knows who else is all as well as Mike Andrade. They have fined him supposedly and we've heard a lot. Well, he said. You know, they told him to get an engineer, design a plan to do it. His old engineer had left because of. Non-payment, the world's, he's had a lot of issues with contractors for non-payment. So we got a new engineer, quote unquote, but they said, well, we won't work until you pay us, so. The DEP said you will get an engineer, you know.
They do have some that sold.
Yeah.
So this this four built, right, or four duplexes built now? There's. One or two more or one more and then a single family that was supposed to be built?
There's more.
There's more, I go, this is like diverse phase of it.
Yeah, okay, I I thought there was, was there eight units total?
No, sixteen.
Well, sorry, eight.
Buildings. Yeah.
And one was a single family.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So seven duplexes, one single and four units are built or four houses are built?
Four units.
Four units. So just two. Okay.
And actually right now, what we've done because um it's such a mess that. We're not issuing any permits for anything to refix the problem in current. It's the only way we can get them to fix it.
Is it fixable?
Met some rent.
There's a lot of.
We gotta hydro seed it and then put, rank it down and let it grow. I mean, he's carved up that hill so bad that. It's just a never ending problem, so.
All right, anyone have anything else?
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Would you have something else?
No, I, yeah, I got. I got the bottom. The second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.